All right, welcome everyone to the regular board meeting. I'm going to call it to order. Public comment, Jamie?
I do actually have two additional comments that came in after we prepared the report. One is from a staff member and they said, "I just wanted to say thank you for all the safety measures the library has not only put in place, but kept in place to ensure our safety, even when other places in our community may be coming a bit lax in restrictions. I have consistently felt safe and comfortable coming to work. Thank you." And so I thought that was important.
That means a lot to us.
Yeah, and the other, the other one is from a patron that we've heard from and discussed before. We're not quite sure exactly what this is, but he says, "Your staff are arrogant and sometimes rude. Do something about it. If it matters, my parents' property taxes have paid approximately $4,000 to this often arrogant and rude library. I drive an extra mile to go to Fairview Library." So Trent is looking into that a little bit. I'm trying to find out if there's something specific about it. But again, this is something where a patron was having a few issues before as well. With, I think, I don't want to make, again, I think it's better just let Trent follow through with it and then we can go from there, but we will look into it.
Thank you. Thank you, Trent. Okay, moving on to the business of the board, the approval of the minutes from the September 30th general meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review them? Any questions or comments, corrections? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
This is Jill Samoot.
Thank you, Jill. A second?
This is Cindy. I'll second.
Thank you, Cindy. Any discussion regarding the minutes? If not, Will, will you please call the roll?
Sorry, Ms. Bednarowski?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
You're muted.
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the finance committee report, Will and Melissa, anything to discuss?
We did not have a finance committee meeting this month. We didn't have anything in particular that needed to be discussed, but the minutes were, or the financials were available to us before the meeting. So we've had plenty of time to review them. And I think Will has done an especially nice job giving us the summary of some of the current issues. So Will, why don't you touch upon the bullet points that you maybe feel deserve to be reiterated?
Yeah, I guess just the general consensus or the overall consensus of where we're at financially is that we're in a pretty good position, much better than I anticipated when the pandemic first hit. I think we're basically going to end up still with a surplus, still with a good variance to budget, and still with the same or close to the same general fund and capital fund that we had in prior years. So we're not, we're not going to be dipping into any, or lowering our general fund balance. And our capital fund balance has actually grown because we're moving money into the capital fund for future projects. So, I mean, like I said, the general consensus is that we're in a much better spot than I thought we would have been in back in April.
Will, we'll have to touch base probably in the next week, but were you thinking that we would be transferring, is it about that same amount that we would transfer into the capital fund for next year? Or have you begun that process at all?
I, I actually think it's smaller, but I will, I will look, because I put together a schedule. Remember, we had that discussion last year for what we were going to move in this first year, based on the maintenance booklet that we received. I have that schedule and I will look that up to determine what, what we think the capital fund transfer is going to be.
Yes, and we've, and we've typically, for everyone's knowledge, most of those projects that we've done so far have been under their estimates, which is very good. And I, I'm hoping that as we continue through the building assessment, that it will be similar. And I think, you know, that, but they did a good job of trying to forecast out just in case, trying to figure out what, you know, the economy was, et cetera. So I think we're in good shape where that is.
Well, as board president, I just want to extend my thanks to everyone who is helping this situation and making it happen, from everyone on staff who's, you know, watching their pennies and filling out those grant applications. And just, you know, the managers who are being so careful with their budgeting and spending. And to you and Will and Trent and the trustees for taking a close look at all of these financials every month. It's, it's just so important and we're in really good shape. And I don't know what the next couple of years are going to bring, but we know how to keep an eye on things. And all of our staff members do as well. I'm, I'm really encouraged.
I did have one question about just sort of your forecasting in terms of, I know our interest is going down in the star accounts, which, you know, across the board, interest is going down. Did you foresee maybe making any changes in terms of what we have at Fifth Third and the tiered CDs? Since those are providing a better return than the star accounts, what is your thought on that, Will?
Yeah, potentially. You know, we, Star Ohio and Star Ohio Plus, you're right, the returns are, are going to remain very low for the foreseeable future. Is it possible to move some more money into our laddered CD approach? Yeah, maybe. I haven't really, we need to have our kind of before-budget discussion with him again anyway. So it's time to, to bring that up with our, with our rep over at Fifth Third, where Jamie and I have a discussion with him, you know, as frequently as possible. We'll, we'll do that again, because that's something to consider. We're already close to that balance anyway of the 2.5 million where you're technically going to get a lower rate. I think that's probably going to go away anyway because of what's going on.
Lower.
Can't get much lower than what you're getting now, but again, we don't necessarily need all the liquid cash that we're sitting on now. We first want to look at budget and what we're going to be spending next year. And then maybe there is room to move some money into Fifth Third, so.
Okay, that was just the one, one thought I had going forward, given you had mentioned in your report that those, those rates, those interest rates were probably stabilizing. And so I thought now that we kind of know where the, where the bottom is or where they're going to land, that gives us an opportunity to, to look at the CDs again, I think.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, this is basically the bottom. I mean, you don't get much lower than where we're at right now. And again, I, there's no anticipation of Fed rates moving. I guess if things got worse, we could go into a, a negative Fed rate. That hasn't happened, but it's possible. I don't see it happening, but it's possible. Again, if, if things got really bad, ultimately, you know, I, I don't know that the Fed has that approach to go into negative rates. I think historically, there's some other economies that have done that. I think Japan is one of them. I've done some reading on that. And it, going into a negative rate typically doesn't get you the results to the, to simulate the economy like it should. So I, I don't see them doing that. I think they're going to just stick where they're at. This is the low point. But it's, it's a little while, so.
I look forward to hearing what you and Jamie discuss with Fifth Third as you enter into this budget cycle. Just hearing that update would be really interesting from a finance point of view.
Well, the reason the CDs have a better rate is because they're laddered. So you'd have a hard time adding to the ladder today, probably at better than even 0.25%.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what is long-term outlook, you know, it's definitely worth having a discussion. I don't know what the long-term outlook is for how much more we could put into a CD and get a better rate of return, but it's worth having the discussion for sure.
Thank you.
And I, I think the, the last meeting we had with him, there was possible discussion of, you know, there was about maybe half a million or so potentially up for grabs that we could increase the Fifth Third investments by. And then, so it all depends that, you know, COVID obviously has played a significant role in this. And, and what do we do? You know, what's the next year even going to look like? You know, getting through the election and all of that environmental turmoil. You know, so the next couple of months, I think, I don't know if that's even a good baseline to forecast off. You know, it'll be, it'll be tricky.
Well, and I, I know that you want to be prudent and conservative in whatever strategy you approach.
Yeah.
Just, it's just, I just am curious what Fifth Third says about that, if they have any insight beyond some of the discussions we've had in finance and what, what your knowledge is, Will and Jamie.
Right.
Or even what other product options there might be out there. Is there, are there any whispers from the state about coming up with a new product? I mean, back in the day, we didn't even have Star Ohio Plus. We just had Star Ohio. Any talk that you've heard?
I haven't seen anything and I anticipate that, that's a, that's a good possibility, but I think it would be more of when we get through the, maybe seeing more of the end of the tunnel for the pandemic, that they would start to have those discussions. I think right now the main focus is economic stability in the state while the pandemic's going on, so.
For sure, for sure. Any other questions or comments? About any of the bulleted items? Will, could you just go over again? I see, thank you for checking about the positive pay cost of $20 a month. Could you just reiterate what we're getting for that $20 a month again?
Sure. Positive pay is a service that basically verifies, it's a secondary verification of checks. And we also do it for ACH transactions as well.
Oh, that's good.
So, in fact, today they sent over the list of pre-approved ACH transactions. So our payroll account, for instance, has transactions that occur from Paycor, from Aetna, and from where our, where our FSA comes out of. Those three are just pre-approved. We don't have to approve that every time. Anything that goes beyond that would not be approved. So again, it's mitigating fraud. It would stop any sort of wire or ACH transaction that would occur that we didn't approve of. And the same thing goes for our checks that we write. Rhonda would upload every check batch that's run. Rhonda uploads those checks, check numbers and the dollar amounts. And if, if an item tries to clear the bank that is not matching that check number and dollar amount, it, it won't clear the bank. So again, it's, it's a secondary approach to stopping fraud.
Thank you. Any other questions about that or anything else in these bulleted items? Any questions about the check register or anything else in the financial statements? We had one, not huge, but large check to Cleveland State. Jamie, Trent, do you remember what that was?
So that check, yeah, so, no, that check, so I took the, the Leadership Academy as well as the Public Management Academy through Cleveland State, which then gets, when you take both of those, you get the Ohio Certified Public Manager Certificate. And so now Trent and Peter are alternating. So Trent is in the Leadership Academy and Peter is in the Public Management Academy and then, or vice versa. And then next year, they'll do the flip side. So we'll get the three of us through that and then we'll potentially open it up to other members of the staff as well. So that payment would have been probably, it would have been one of their payments. It's probably Trent's payment for his. I think Peter's is going to be billed later. I don't know that that check has been cut.
Great, great. Now, staff development is so important, so thank you both for putting in that time. Any other questions, anyone? If not, may I have a motion to approve the September financial statements?
This is Melissa. I move that we approve the financial statements for September.
Thank you, Melissa. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Any discussion? Will, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bednarowski?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Cindy?
I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, we'll move on to the gift report for September. A very nice gift from the Women's Committee and the Foundation for the Auditorium Project. That was a wonderful contribution. Any questions about the gift report, anyone? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
This is Jill, motion to approve the gift report.
Thank you. May I have a second? Cindy, did I see you raise your hand? Yeah.
Yes.
Any discussion? Will?
Ms. Bednarowski?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Will, did you have anything else to discuss today before we move on?
Nope.
All right, very good. Thank you. Jamie, director's report?
Yes, so I will touch base basically on the, the first two bullets in my report. The, I, I just wanted to reiterate the, all of the work that the strategic planning team did to pull off the Zoom meeting of our, we had, I believe it was 65 in attendance. So we had a all-day Zoom meeting with 65 individuals. It was by far the largest I've ever attended and I think anyone else who attended that day attended. They, they dotted their i's and crossed their t's. And as I mentioned in the report, you know, there were several staff members that made a lot of positive comments about it. We weren't sure exactly how it was going to go. And most of that, the team in general, but Trent is, I passed over the torch to Trent shortly before that meeting to lead the team. Obviously, I am still on the team and, and keep touch with them, but Trent is actually leading that team now, making sure that things get moved forward. So a big thanks to Trent. So again, I just, that, that one little paragraph, just, I just really wanted to make sure that, that, that the board understood what an undertaking that was, so. And we're not afraid to do Zoom meetings in the future. We had breakout rooms and we had great discussion. People, staff were, were able to discuss the topics and we brought everything back to the main room and we're, we're able to relay those back out to everyone, so it was, it was very good.
Impressive.
The, and then as far as my second bullet, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. We, tomorrow, when the governor talks, they'll have the updated advisory level map. We were starred last week, which means we very well could go to level four. So the last time that we were starred, we did not go to level four. And to my knowledge, I don't think a county has been at level four to this point since the advisory map was created. But based on the policy that we passed back in, I believe it was, I think it was May, we would do, basically close the building to the public. Our staff would continue to work. We'd probably have a staff, there'd probably be more staff that would be at home more rather than in the building for the percentages that they are. But we would do curbside as well as our phone reference and services, as well as continue to do virtual programming. So I just wanted to make sure with, with that looming on the horizon tomorrow, that if anyone objected to that or felt differently, that, that could be discussed prior to getting to that point, so.
Yeah. Anyone have any thoughts on this?
I did have a, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I had a, a couple of friends who are huge bibliophiles who were very excited to make their second run on the library, which they did, and left with large stacks of books last night. So it's become a thing to have a library run, which is more important than a grocery run for some people, so. And it's, I think those people who, who value what the library offers are so grateful that they're able to sign out, what they're able to sign out.
Right, right. But, so knowing how important it is, do you have any thoughts about going back to curbside only if we go to the purple level four?
My thoughts are that the library is choosing to do the right thing and keeping with its policy. That's my thought.
I have a clarification question. In Jamie, in your report, you mentioned that drive-through would be open, but when you just spoke, you just said just curbside. Just wondering, will the drive-through window be open or will it just be curbside? And how does the staff feel about that if the window will be open?
So we, so we start, and I'll, and Trent, be ready. We turned, we started the drive-through, I think it was, we talked about that, I think it's been a month now. And it seems to be going well. The, the potential problem is, and I refer to it as curbside and, and we're still somewhat in discussion about that, because if the drive-through could handle it and the weather is inclement, we, we would potentially want to do that. The other op, the other option is telling people that, telling patrons that it's curbside, but then we could say, okay, we're ready, proceed to the, to the window. So I think that works as well. So we can, we can manage it both ways. And I'll turn it over to Trent as far as staff feedback on drive-through, et cetera, in his conversation with Bridget.
So the drive-through is really, really great for a lot of reasons. It offers a lot of protection for, like, there's a big plexiglass there. We only accept materials, we only send materials out and then there's a book drop right there. So staff, when we reintroduced it, we're real happy with it. Because then they also, they're a little worried about the, the weather in the next few months coming up. If it's cold rain or snow, it, they're prepared for that. They can do it. But they're also then going to come back into a warm building. And so there's that kind of measuring and getting prepared for that, that they weren't really looking forward to, but were prepared to do. So we would love to not have to do that in some ways, because the drive-through is a really good experience for more of our patrons than curbside anyways. It's, you know, you don't have to call in. There's less steps. Some people, curbside was maybe a little bit better, but the majority of things, drive-through was the preference. The only issue is if we have too many people wanting to use the book drop in their, and/or drive-through for different reasons, and that's the only way to do, I'm going to talk with Bridget to see if, if we, if we offer both to start with. And that way, if drive-through backs up, we can go back to curbside and hit, there'll be more staff in the building that could assist with that potentially and have that as a backup option if the drive-through gets to be unmanageable or traffic jam.
Thank you. That makes a lot of sense.
It does make a lot of sense.
It's a balancing act.
Yeah. So my thoughts about going back to curbside rather than remaining open. We are, you know, a public entity and this is, these levels are being decided on and coming down from, from the state and the governor. I feel like, as Jamie and I have discussed, we need to remain a community leader in doing the right thing, right, in following the rules. The rules apply. And we need to show the community that we can still provide the service, but in a very, very safe way. Otherwise, why do we even bother with these county designations, right? I mean, they've, people have just got to follow the rules so that we can get out of this mess. And as a public entity, I feel like we need to lead the way. Any thoughts on that?
I agree 100%.
Yeah, beautifully stated. And since the County Board of Health is even recommending all libraries would be closed if we reach that next level, I, I think we have to follow that guideline. As you put it, we're the leaders. We have to do that.
Right, right, exactly. Otherwise, we're just going to keep going in this weird grayness that's not getting us anywhere, right? I mean,
Right.
We know we can provide the service. Cindy, did you have a thought?
I agree with everything that's been said. Just one thought, especially in the first couple of days after we go back to curbside, assuming that we go to the next higher level. It would, is it possible, maybe put up a sign or something by the front door to let everybody know, "Library is closed, curbside pickup only." In other words, so you don't have people parking and coming up to the door? Is that, did we have any of those signs from last time around where it said, "Library is closed, curbside pickup service only"?
Yeah, we'll, we will try to get that message out as, as much as we can. And, you know, last Thursday when we went to start, I had a conversation with Trent and Chanelle and we started to also try to get that message out to let people know that it would be curbside only again. And hopefully it's not too long, but you know, who knows, it's.
Right, right. You did a great job with the communication.
Honestly, yeah, exactly. I mean, we, yeah, Cindy, we, we will, we will do our best to get things out and, you know, maybe even if we do one of those long signs, for instance.
That's what I was thinking, just to say.
Yeah, I don't know what Chanelle turned around on those are, but we should probably get them just to have so that we can put, put it in and put it out and put it in if we need to.
And the digital sign. Yep.
Yeah, right. And the email address to the community, all of those things we'll use, I'm sure.
I just wanted to reiterate a thank you to you guys and to all of the staff who's being flexible with this, because I think it's the right call, but I also know that it comes with a lot of work. And so we appreciate that very much.
Right, absolutely. Well said.
Yes.
Good, okay. So Jamie, did that give you the feedback you were looking for?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we were, that we were in agreement and that if anyone disagreed, that they at least had a chance for us all to consider. So I'm okay with it and I think that it, it also goes to, to put into place the forethought that we had, you know, before and as this system was, was put into place.
Personally, I love curbside, so if it's the right thing to do, I'm all for it. All right, what else in your report then, Jamie?
That was all I had as far as what I wanted to mention to the board. I don't know if there was any questions or anything additional. I didn't, a lot of, again, a lot of the time the last month was, was really the preparations for that staff meeting. So that, that really is what we, we did for most of the month.
Sure, that makes sense. And it sounds like it was a tremendous success, so that's good. Anyone have any questions for Jamie? Melissa?
I did. Jimmy, would it be possible to give us an update about the installation, the technology installations at the lower level?
Yes, thank you. And I had Peter, yes, and I had Peter on. I talked to Peter earlier today and I said, "I'm going to turn it over to you." So Peter, if you want to let him know what's going on with that?
Sure. They had supply issues for a number of weeks and it wasn't until this week that they got back into the building. I think the last time we talked in late September, they had just started a little bit, but then they just didn't have the equipment. So they're, they're back in working this week. I put an email out to their project manager earlier today, hoping that he would give, give us an update before the meeting, but I have not heard back. But they, they're, they're in and they're working, you know, 7:00 AM until probably five or so that they're leaving for the day this week, so. We'll see, fingers crossed. Be in tomorrow, get in there, take a look, see where they're at. Hopefully I'll hear back from Tom. If I do, I can forward that on to the board, put it on Teams or forward it out to your guys' email address.
Yes, that would be helpful, for sure.
I'm thinking about the, the timing with, you know, the possibility of being a closed building and the possibility that this one room of this project might be completed. Wouldn't that be nice to be able to use this new system?
Yeah, by tomorrow.
Maybe not by tomorrow, but maybe there's some. maybe there's some.
Very soon.
Something.
Keep us updated, for sure.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, we can discuss, if there's no other questions, we can discuss the, um, the calendars, the board meeting schedule as well as the library closing. We can approve those.
Okay, very good, let's move on to the, uh, meeting calendar then, that seems to be next on the, in the packet.
Yeah, and that's, um, that's in line with what we've been doing the last, uh, few years. That's basically a meeting every, um, every month except November, the, um, the last Wednesday of the month. All meetings are at seven. Um, and I don't, we didn't really have anything necessarily, um, that, you know, like, um, holidays or anything like that would necessarily impede. I don't know if any board members know of anything that, um, would need to change that schedule at all.
Everyone, just take note of that December meeting, you know, we always have it early in the month.
Yeah, I think that should be the fifteenth.
Oh.
Twenty twenty-one?
Um, actually, it would be the eighth. The second Wednesday in December is the eighth, actually, so, um, we will modify that. Thank you, Dan. Cause December starts on, um, Wednesday next year.
Uh-huh. Any other questions about these meeting dates, any concerns, anyone seeing?
I checked with the school calendar and it's fine with this Rocky River Schools calendar.
Okay, good, any other questions or comments?
We used to have just ten meetings a year, I thought, and it went up to eleven, do we still need eleven?
We did that, that's why I was, um, the last few years, we used to skip the July meeting, Dan. And, uh, then we had, um, uh, um, there was actually quite a bit, uh, happens in July and we ended up having special meetings. And, um, July first is also when, uh, potentially, although, um, uh, it potentially when a new trustee might start. And so, um, that's why I would say in the last few years, we went with those, with basically meeting every, every month except November.
If there are no further questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one meeting date schedule for the board?
This is Cindy, so move.
Thank you, Cindy, may I have a second?
I'll second, this is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny, any discussion about this?
As modified.
As modified, yes, thank you.
As corrected, yes, thank you. Will, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bednarski.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Stickney.
Yes.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to the scheduled library closing dates for twenty twenty-one.
Um, yeah, this is, um, pretty self-explanatory, there's a couple of things with this. Um, the, last year and this year, we use Columbus Day to, um, to close and use that for Staff Development Day. And that seems to be working well. Previously, we were closing, um, we tried to close in the summer, uh, usually the day after school closed or the week after school closed. And that put a undue burden on staff, especially children's, uh, when they're trying to get ready for summer reading. And so it seems to be that October date works well. And I'm not sure that any date really to close would work, but Columbus Day, um, people are at least somewhat used to, um, the other government institutions, post office, et cetera, being closed. So that was still in, uh, so that we kept that day for next year. And then the other thing with this calendar is, uh, it does still list, um, last Sunday to be open during the school year as well as, um, resumed Sunday hours. And that is in keeping with what we're doing right now. But one of the things in strategic plan is as early as next year, potentially, we would be open Sundays throughout the summer. So this, um, at that point, when we got through those discussions, we decided to move that way, uh, this would be modified in that sense. Um, so just, um, to kind of keep that on your radar.
Right, right. And Jamie, typically on the Columbus Day, what kind of attendance do we see at the library if we're open?
Um, I, I don't know that it's any less or more than normal.
Okay.
Um, you know, I can certainly, we can have Peter look at historical attendance as well. He could probably get that through Cersei, again, that's something we could post on Teams. But again, I, I don't know that, you know, um, you know, the, what other day would we do it necessarily, you know?
I know.
That, that's kind of the, 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 the thinking there.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure it's not historically a huge attendance day for us.
As far as I know, it's not. And there weren't, you know, people weren't beating down our doors, you know, last year or this year, um, you know, or crying out that, you know, we weren't open, um, when we, you know, they thought we should have been.
Right, right. Anyone have any questions or comments about this schedule?
I don't have a question, but just a comment. If, if we, I'm, I'm guessing that we don't say Columbus Day when we talk about that, but I think it's important to also say Indigenous People Day. Um, I think that's the way that the world is going to say both. But if we are closing, not to say we're closing for Columbus Day, but to say we're in closing, closing for Indigenous People Day, or say both. Um, but I think it's important to include that, I just wanted to.
Well, yes, that's a very good point, Jenny, and I apologize for that, um, I do need to get into that practice. But we would just say we're closed for staff development. So it would not be in honor of either one necessarily. Um, but it just seems to be in, in mo, in some people's minds, um, although, you know, I tend to still go to the post office and remember that they're closed on those types of days anyways. Or go to the mailbox.
Yeah, thank you, Jen. Anyone else? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to approve the closing dates for twenty twenty-one?
I move that we approve the closing dates, this is Melissa for twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Melissa, I will second, any discussion? Will?
Ms. Bednarski.
Yes.
Ms. Stickney.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, personnel report.
Very easy one, Trent.
Very easy.
Um, nothing to report.
Nothing to report, we like that.
We will still want to approve it.
Yeah. May I have a motion to approve the personnel report for October twenty twenty?
This is Jill, I approve that, make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Jill, second?
I'll second, this is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny, any discussion? I don't know what we would discuss, but any discussion? Will?
Ms. Bednarski.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Stickney.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Thank.
All right, um, before we move on to the president's report, I wanted to turn over any questions?
Well, there's one more thing that Trent wanted to kind of pull the board about as well, so, uh, before we get into that, sorry.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Yeah, so let me just, um, we are, we wanted to get the board's thoughts. Um, the children's department is interested in doing a drag queen storytime. Um, so, um, given that these programs, when offered, other places in Ohio have met with some, um, resistance, a lot of it being broadcasted out wider than some of the other programs. Uh, we want to make sure that if we did proceed with it, that the board also felt that it was within our mission and a worthwhile thing to, uh, approach. So, just a little background, what a drag queen storytime is and why there was some, um, notoriety around these specifically. So it is just a traditional storytime program where the presenter is a trained storyteller who's also a drag queen. So they come in full costume garb, um, makeup, wigs, um, and they present a program. One misconception is that the program is on LBGQ topics and that isn't the case. Like, um, presentation on like sexual identity or any kind of topics kind of revolved around that community. It is, the message is always kind of about like acceptance of differences. And so they present the program, in the program, if there's a message, it is around, we're all different in some ways. And that's okay, that's something to be proud of. So the, the object is really to have a program where we are offering a voice for that community, essentially. Kids come, they hear a storytime, and the only thing that they're getting out of it is hearing it from a different perspective and seeing that perspective. So they'll leave maybe realizing there's something different, I'm not a hundred percent sure what it is. And either they, we leave it at that, or it's up to the parent to take it further. So I think, you know, from our perspective, it fits pretty well into the mission. The reason we're getting these presenters is because they're trained. They tend to be, um, very lively, enthusiastic, which is exactly what you kind of want for a storytime. It is engaging, um, and that, I mean, part of the reason, um, Kathleen is the one that is most interested in doing this. Part of the reason she was interested into it, she's went to them, she's seen it and she, she wants to bring that engagement to her own storytimes. And, you know, it's something that she wants to model in some ways. From my perspective, it is very much, I think it's important that we're trying to offer all age programs that also reflect our community. It is not maybe all of our community, but it's definitely a subset of the Rocky River community. I, I know I've got feedback from, um, the book discussions we hold around social justice issues and race issues that, um, George Litchman leads for us, which was, it's awesome that you're doing this, but we also make, wanna make sure that you're holding programs that are led by people of those communities. We want to see people, you know, with like, that represent that community, leading programs that type of touch on those topics too. So I, I view this within that same sort of feedback and advice, and I, I want to make sure that we're doing it. It doesn't have to be this program, but it is, I think, something that we want to do. So that's the mission aspect. Uh, why this program causes more concern and why we're bringing it here is because, um, and probably the one that's most famous within Ohio is Delaware County, last year tried to offer a drag queen one-on-one program. It was for teens, older audience, slightly different, um, but there was some resistance, but the main issue is they had canceled because they had a threat of violence against the library that was deemed credible. Additionally, right about that same time, um, Larry Householder, the, um, and commissioner, house leader, um, wrote a open letter to Ohio Library Council condemning the programs. Um, so they, I would fully anticipate that there would be some, um, some people would come to Jamie, myself, or very likely the board, saying that they don't view this as something we should be doing. Very likely. Um, I think we could be prepared for that. Um, we would also have to be prepared potentially for more extreme circumstances and we'd have to be prepared to know what to do if we had, um, threat of violence. Um, more recently, a Columbus school, um, that had this as an after-school thing, um, had essentially Twitter tags from unverified, unidentified Twitter accounts that were causing issue on their, on their social media. So we'd have to be very thoughtful about doing it. And it's frankly something that needs to be discussed and make sure we're on the same page before we move forward. Um, so I, I wasn't sure where, um, if there's questions about program, about why we wanna do it or anything else I can help with, but it'd be very interesting knowing how you view it.
From, uh, my perspective, uh, before we let the board weigh in, um, I, I think that as Trent Line, um, laid out, it does, um, fit within, um, the various, uh, diversity, ethnicity and inclusion topics that are very, um, um, I, I guess in the forefront today. Um, but, and Cleveland Heights, I know, I think has done them and there has not, there's not been much fanfare, uh, surrounding that. I did have one of the members of the, um, support groups, uh, at one point, and I think it was after the Delaware program. They actually stopped me in the, in the hallway, uh, this was last year, and said, we're not gonna hold one of those drag queen programs, are we? Um, so, not that that should necessarily deter us, but, um, so there, but there was one, um, you know, I, um, one person at least already that just took the time out of their schedule to, um, to say something. Um, and if something were to, if we were to have the program and there was, um, some type of fanfare or the media caught it, I, um, you know, it would be something where we don't want the board to later say, you know, why, why didn't you tell us this? Or, you know, we would have never done this, or whatever, I'm not saying that that's your opinion. Um, but we just wanted to, you know, make sure that everyone, again, uh, knew potentially what was going on, that there, there could be problems surrounding it, um, and, uh, that we would, um, move based on what the, those recommendations were or were not.
And I did forget to mention that we're looking at Pride Month, so that would be July twenty twenty-one. And there's a lot of variables, given the state of the world pandemic-wise, that are in play before this could even happen too, so. But, um, we start planning that soon and they start booking up for Pride Month.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna say, I think that this is a great idea and I love the idea of moving forward. I think it, if I can make a recommendation, that there would be some sort of like script or training for all staff. Um, because if this does become a flashpoint, we wanna make sure that everybody in the building is able to quickly know the next steps and the escalation, just to make sure the staff is protected and we are all on the same page. But I think that this is another great example of being a leader in a community. So thanks for bringing it to us.
That is something, we reached out to, um, Cleveland Heights, Charlotte, um, worked for them when they did it. And so she talked with their manager and that is something they did and something they strongly suggested that we have.
Great, thank you.
I, I had a question, when you said storyteller, do you mean someone's telling a story and not reading a book? Is that what a storyteller is?
I believe they would be using library materials, um, so they would use a book. But, um, with our story, like our storytimes and what they would do, we have a few options of people that have either done this at Heights or do this at, um, theaters or local establishments. Um, they would use library materials, book, and then storyteller potentially, yes, they would, you know, add a library onto it as well.
So if we are still in a situation where we can't have large groups of people, is this something that would be recorded and available? Or are we not there yet?
Um, at this time, we're looking probably most, hopefully at like a, anticipating that we're not gonna be back to normal. Most hopefully like a outdoor venue that's could be socially separated, but in person, it would be most effective. I'm not even sure if, um, there's a cup, there's two, um, individuals locally that do these frequently. Um, and I don't know if either of them is interested or willing to do it virtually at this point. Although at least one isn't.
I like the really theatrical kind of component to it. Um, and I'm wondering, has the children's department ever done any other, costumed, um, storytelling events?
Every Halloween. Um, it's slightly different, but, um, I, I know there's been princess ones, or there's been themed ones, um, before. But every Halloween, um, Mary Ellen does a, a baby in me at the very least. I think it, uh, it goes kind of through all ages, um, they usually do it. But I know the baby in me, um, gets a lot of traffic on our, um, social media.
I, I would encourage, you know, as you think about ways to answer questions or pushback, is to think about this in the context of we already do costume storyteller, storytelling events. And this is just a continuation of a service that we've already provided. I, I, I mean, I can see this developing into some other ways too. You know, this is pride, you talk about Pride Month, but you could do something with, um, African-American History Month. You can get some really interesting speakers that Rocky River might not typically see. And speakers and storytellers, or storytellers, story readers, however, I, I don't know. It could be really, a really interesting program that is kind of emerging from this.
I agree. I think that representation of various voices is something that we, we're, we're thinking more about as we proceed to.
We, we, we all really miss the theater too, so if there's any way to get actors in there, a little bit of Broadway, yeah, that'd be great.
Now, I, I love the way that we're being creative and keeping with our mission. Um, I, I echo Jenny's comments. I think this is fantastic. It just continues on with our mission and the creativity of the children's staff. I'm looking at other ways to make sure that everyone feels included in our community. I think that's wonderful, and that's, that's what we're about, is educating and engaging people in all different ways. And I, I, I think also to Jenny's point on the scripting for staff, but also the scripting that, on how this ties with our messaging, and just, you know, a different perspective and different voices. I, but I know we've got, you know, an exceptional team on how they message anything, so it, it will be carried forward beautifully. So that's probably the biggest challenge I see, is how do we message this so that people know what a positive experience and how this fits with our mission, but you've been doing it all along.
Well said.
I'm sorry, one last little bit. I'm sorry to speak twice, but I just, I was thinking about this. I actually had it written down to talk about if it came up. But there was a note in the adult services about a program about how to talk to your kids about race. And I don't think, I, I don't know for sure, but I don't think that it was, um, marketed to childrens, right? And so like the, the parents are in children's with the children. So if it's about how to talk about, talk to kids about race, then maybe it should be marketed to parents. And I think that it would be great to have some sort of program like that, um, in conjunction with this. So how to talk to your kids about LGBTQ A issues could be like a nice partnership that could kind of really, um, help, help drive this home.
Great idea.
Very good. Anyone else have any comments, thoughts? Trent, um, this is a qualified person doing a program for us. I fully support.
I appreciate all the feedback.
Absolutely.
And I, I know they'll appreciate the support from the board.
Wonderful. Please let us know what else we can do.
Good. Um, if it doesn't happen now, hopefully in the future, kind of, given pandemic situation, but thank you.
It will happen in the future, for sure. Very good. Thank you so much. Trent, did you have anything else for us?
Not unless, um, you had something for me.
Um, I don't believe so. I actually had a couple of questions for Peter from his departmental report. You let us know that we added 10 more hotspots. What's our total that we have at this point?
So we have, um, probably about 55 that are circulating out to patrons. And the reason I say probably is some of them go lost, uh, you know, they're checked out, they don't come back. Uh, we actually just had one come back today, from what I heard, that was just the hotspot itself, but the case and the cable and the charger were all missing. And that one actually had gone to lost, you know, eight or nine or 10 months ago. So the, the stock kind of comes in and out of rotation. We get 10 every year at a discounted price. We pay the data plan, but we get the device, uh, for free as part of a program that TechSoup and Mobile Beacon run together. Uh, and then we purchase just a few extra over the summer, um, uh, to help with, uh, demand during the closing and, and for staff doing work from home.
Right, right. Good, good. And then the Paper Cut printing capabilities that you discussed, could you just elaborate that on that a little bit more?
Sure. So that is, um, Paper Cut is a software that Clevenet uses. Uh, it's, it's, it's available to all member libraries, uh, through, through Clevenet. Uh, member libraries pay a license for the first year, and then after that, Clevenet picks up the tab. And what it will let, uh, patrons do is, uh, remote printing or mobile printing. And so remote printing is going to be, uh, printing from home. Off-site, off-network. Mobile printing is if you brought your own device into the library, a laptop, a tablet or whatever, uh, you'd be able to print to, to one of the printers in the library.
Right.
We're hoping to get, we had been looking at a different product from a different company, um, previously, but, uh, we met that company and Clevenet and I met, and, and, and Clevenet kind of determined, well, ours can kind of do the same thing, and here's how it would work. So we're currently, they, they put up a test environment for us, so we're currently testing that, um, Jim and Amy.
So, oh, Peter?
Uh, I think we lost him.
Is it, he frozen for anyone else? All right.
Yeah, he might be. So, um, I can sort of continue. We, we've been having conversations about this for a while, and I've been really trying to push that, um, uh, that remote printing. So, you know, you're at home, you got a project due or a paper due or whatever. Your printer isn't working for whatever reason. You can send it to the library and you can print it. And that's something that we've been working on for quite a while. So this is something that we can at least utilize that portion of this technology and then go from there. So I think it will be, it won't necessarily, uh, be something that, we got Peter back, but it won't be something maybe people use all the time, but it's going to be one of those lifesaver things. And it's going to be the things where the library saves the day in the nick of time. So it's, it's, you know, like I said, um, uh, we, we have been talking about this. I've been trying to get this for, for a while.
No, and that's why I wanted to talk about it tonight, uh, not only so that it's out in the general meeting, but, um, so we can just talk about how you guys are so forward-thinking and thinking about what does the community need, especially in these coming months. We just don't know what things are going to look like and what other support people need. So, um, I, I'm just very happy to see this service being added. What's it going to look like if we go to purple, to level four?
And with this service?
Yeah.
So somebody could then, um, if, if they're, well, we haven't gotten that far yet, but theoretically, somebody could, um, have sent the print. We could, um, approve the job and we could have something where they can pick it up, you know, at curbside or at the drive-thru. It would take a little more staff intervention, but we could still do it.
Okay, all right. Jill, are you still with us?
No, Jill had to leave.
Okay, she did have to leave at eight, just to let everyone know.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Anyone else have any questions about the departmental, uh, reports?
It's Cindy. I had a quick question. I think it was Sheri mentioned that she is working on a diversity and inclusion platform. What does she mean by that? Is it a platform for staff to use of different resources, or what, what is it?
Uh, it's training in general, so we're in discussion right now with the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio, which actually, um, they're single-handedly taking over Rocky River. This, this has, this is a multi-pronged approach. Um, the schools have a consultant, um, that is basically, um, seems to be like, um, on staff at this point. Our last curriculum advisory committee, uh, he spoke and talked to us about the things that they were doing with the schools. I know Mick, the superintendent, is going through their leadership program. And so we're also trying to get a multi-year, um, uh, process in place, because this is something where we don't want to just check the box. We don't want to say, "We had this training, we're good." Uh, this is something where we say, "We had this training and we have, uh, goals that have come up from it, and there are activities, uh, that continue or that we will continue to do things." The Diversity Center will do, um, they'll look at our policies, they'll look at our practices, they'll look at our hiring practices. They, you know, they, they basically will kind of come in and, and, um, do as much as you want when it comes to this type of stuff. So, uh, she's, she's kind of been the liaison. Trent and Sheri and I met with the person at the center. We're actually also trying to see if we can possibly get a grant that would extend it to like a three-year deal potentially, which maybe then we could also send, um, you know, like I maybe could go through the, the, their, um, their specific leadership program. And then also in addition to that, the mayor and I spoke, where the, the, um, the city is, um, looking to contract with the Diversity Center to bring training in. It would be, um, I think it would be three half-days that they were looking to do to help train the various civic organizations that are throughout the city, in which those leaders could then take some of that stuff back to their civic groups. And so I told the mayor, um, we actually are going to be a sponsor on that. She got a majority of the money through the Community West Foundation. And, um, we are going to be, I think it's at, um, um, she asked for $600, and I thought, well, for $600, yes, we can definitely be leaders in our community and, and, um, and assist with this. So, um, we would also participate in the, the part that the city is doing. But, but everyone would know that it's also being brought to them by the library, and that the library is the, again, that place where we're leading amongst our community and setting the example in our community. So, um, so it is vague at this point because we don't know exactly what it's going to look like. But that's kind of where that's going.
Sounds great. Good, thank you.
Has there, I'm sorry to, um, bring up another committee, but is there, has there been any talk of a committee, a diversity and inclusion committee or council within library staff, um, to talk about some of these things or to help spearhead these initiatives? Both what Trent was talking about and what you're talking about seem like they could fall under this?
So I think in that case, we would, we potentially could develop a team. Um, you know, we have, we, we take that teams approach. Uh, it has not been brought up to this point. We're, we're still somewhat in the, the way that we've handled this is basically Trent and Sheri and I have been trying to take, um, every single, um, offering that's been out there as far as training to make sure that we know, um, you know, what this should look like and what we want to then pass down. And so we're at the stage now where we want to start getting other staff involved. We've had conversations, um, but we didn't necessarily want to open the other various trainings up to staff. And staff go to a training and they come back and they're like, "Well, we're not doing this," or "This training said we should do this," and, and we're getting, you know, everything from all the different angles. So that's kind of been the way that we've approached it. And, and certainly with this, um, working with the Diversity Center, that probably would be something that could come of that, Jenny. And it's also in the strategic plan, um, you know, as part of the healthy organization. So we wanted, we, we also put it in black and white to make sure that it is a priority. So I think as we go, uh, it, it very well could be something that, um, that comes up.
Okay, that makes sense. Good. Any other questions about this? Or any of the other departmental reports? All right, very good. Uh, president's report, I really have nothing to report. We can move on to the committee reports. Buildings and grounds, Dan?
No meetings since the last board meeting, so nothing to report.
Okay. And personnel, Dave is absent, so no report for that. Any new business from anyone? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn our October meeting.
Thank you, Melissa. May I have a second?
I'll second. This is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, everyone. What a great meeting. Lots to discuss, lots of new and exciting things. And thank you also, uh, for all of your feedback about everything that's happening. I think it's so valuable. Everyone, take care, stay healthy, and we'll keep you apprised as far as what happens with the governor tomorrow, okay? Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.